The Imows County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Welcome everyone that's in attendance. And at this time, we will have our pledge of allegiance immediately following our invocation.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, hallowed be thy name. We thank you for this day that you have given unto us. We thank you for all your wonderful blessings that you have given to each and every one of us. We thank you for life itself. I ask that you be with us in this meeting tonight, be with everyone that's here, grant them safe travels back to their homes. We ask that you bless our public officials in whatever capacity they may serve. Also bless our military. For all this asked in Christ's name, amen. Okay. Next is the setting of the agenda. Anybody have anything that want to add to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss the removal of Ms. Jo Tricia Humbles from the library board.
Mr. Lashon, on this, we vote on that first.
We need a second, and then you'd vote on it.
Okay.
You need a second.
Okay, is that second? Hearing none, then we'll move on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to discuss my resignation from this board, the possible resignation.
I'm sorry to hear that, Reverend Jones.
That would also need a second to discuss it.
You made the motion, is that second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused. I mean, if Mr. Jones has something that he wants to say, I guess he can say that during supervisor's concerns. I don't think it needs a motion. I'm not sure what the motion would be. I mean, I don't want Mr. Jones to leave us.
Well, my feeling is, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is if I can't get the support to be able to discuss something that's extremely important to me. I asked for a meeting to discuss some things that I was very concerned about, and if, I mean, there's no support, no way that I can be able to discuss my concerns, you know, I have to question whether this is where I need to be. And I said the possibility. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mr. Hogan is correct that Reverend Jones can discuss the second issue at his supervisor's concern if he desires to do so. Yes, that would be encompassed in supervisor's concerns.
Okay. Okay, after hearing that, saying that, is our motion to approve the agenda as is.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is citizen comment period. This time, it's provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen should be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. And we have, when you come up, please state your name and address for the record. Jesse Murch.
Good afternoon. My name is Jesse Murch. I live at 1890 Church Street. I want to start by thanking the board for making what I believe was the right decision last June to remove the library board. I think, I think there's been a lot of talk and maybe confusion about why that was, and maybe people felt the pressure of those things, but I think the pressure was well warranted. The question is, is there merit to having such books in a library, an LGBTQ display, knee-high to a grasshopper, targeted at children? Is that appropriate? Is that what we are as Appomattox? And I know that there's going to be many different viewpoints presented here today, but the question is, is this appropriate for, is this age appropriate? Is it age appropriate to have a book that says, "If you're drag queen and you know it," with a little sing-along ditty trying to encourage drag culture in children? Is that appropriate? And some people are going to voice yes here tonight, but I think in your conscience, you know that is inappropriate. So there needs to be a change, there needs to be accountability, and you took that action to hold those responsible who made those decisions. And that's a hard decision to make. I think everyone knows that's a hard decision to make, and I commend you for making that decision. And there was a reappointment of new board members, and Al Jones, you were pointing someone from this meeting who obviously was concerned about the direction of that library. You chose people from your constituents about the concern of the direction of that library. So I don't think you need to be afraid of the decision. I think you've made the right hand, your hands are the plow, don't look back. At the end of the day, you have two basic duties. One is to serve your constituents, and those are here tonight, your friends, your neighbors, not outsiders, not extreme political ideology. That's not what you're here to serve, and I think all of you know that. I think that's your desire. There's ample opportunity to not look back, to show love to God by protecting children, by saying, "Look, Appomattox, this is not welcome. Appomattox, we just want kids to be kids. And Appomattox, we want it to be normal that children are not sexually exploited for an extreme leftist agenda." I was able to go to the library meeting Thursday at four o'clock, and I do want to at least give a small report on that. There was no public comment period in that meeting. There was no public address of the concerns that we had in this meeting. And so I would especially encourage Bill Hogan and Sammy Carter, because you did say you were to investigate those things, to do that, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Jo Tricia Humbles. Remind you folks are coming up, that the clock is up on the wall.
My name is Jo Tricia Humbles. I'm at 105 Humbles Farm Lane, Appomattox, Virginia. I am up here because my name has been used a lot in this community, and I would say that most of you in this room don't even know me. And what you said about me was a misrepresentation, it was negative, and it was harmful. Yes, I am the lead agent of Appomattox for Equality. Our website is www appomattoxforequality.com. Nothing on that website says Black Lives Matters. We are for equality and social justice. I have been a native, I grew up here, I'm almost 50, I have lived here all my life. I've been an active member of this community for over 20 years. 4-H, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, several other community agencies and situations. So to say that I would harm children is a false accusation, and I also want to say something because misinformation about me and the board. I was nominated and appointed to start my term on July 1st, 2022. I know that some people have mentioned that I've known about the displays prior to that, but I was not a member of the board. Secondly, I want to make note that the Board of Supervisors, you have been invited to those meetings and no one has shown up. I've also heard allegations that we were told to not do the display. I haven't spoken to any one of you in the year that I served on the board. So I feel like what happened in June was a true misreputation of our community. You basically are telling our community members, who are part of the LGBTQ community, that they don't matter, that they don't exist, that they don't pay taxes, that they don't believe in God, that they don't love people, but they do. In that meeting on June, someone made the comment about people who are part of that community have a high suicide rate. But I want to give you some facts, because the facts were not given. Yes, it's true. Members of the LGBTQ community do have a high suicide rate. However, LGBTQ youth who felt high social support from family, community, report suicide as less than half the rate of those felt low or moderate social support. Support in their community, support in their family. We have kids, if they care, if you care about kids, we have kids who completed their lives by suicide for that same reason. My time is up. Thank you.
Laura Catrell.
Hi, Laura Cartratt, and I live at 147 Highland Avenue. What is the fine if we check them out and never return them? Is it enough, if enough of us do it and it forces them to keep ordering, maybe it will send a message? Those are the statements made by Brandon Barney, the man Mr. Hinkle nominated for the Library of Trustees. Members of the Board of Supervisors, is this the caliber of character you want on our library board? This is a man who advocated to steal books from our library, and he is now a vice chair of this library board, no less. On social media, for the entire community to see this man did this, I have copies of the printout where you can see that. Jo Tricia Humbles is the single library board member that was removed last month. Mrs. Humbles have worked in human services and mental health for over 20 years. She has been an adult volunteering for our 4-H for over 20 years and has also been volunteering with the local Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. Ms. Humbles holds a bachelor's degree in rhetoric studies and mass communication. She also has two master's degrees, excuse me, one in general counseling studies and one in licensed professional counseling. Mrs. Humbles is a certified substance abuse motivational interviewer and a trauma-informed juvenile restoration counselor. Mrs. Humbles has been a member of Appomattox County all of her life. She has spent a great deal of her time actively, actively making this town a safer place for our children. I was appalled to see that you board members voted to remove a woman who consistently champions for the youth of this community. Mr. Hinkle, you motioned to remove an overly qualified black woman and nominated a man who told our community members to steal books from our library. You, sir, should be ashamed of your poor judgment character. I am asking that Brandon Barney be removed and replaced as the Falling River District Representative. I'm also asking, and more importantly, I'm then demanding that Jo Tricia Humbles be reinstated and a representative for the Piney Mountain District. If you do not proceed with the latter, you are sending a very clear message to the black community of Appomattox, and I need you to think about that. I have grown up here, lived here most of my life, and I am now raising my family here. My entire life, I have watched closeted peers, family members, and community leaders leave Appomattox to find somewhere else to raise their families. Those places have significantly less racism and bigotry. We want them here in our community, pouring into our community. Why are we shunning the queer community members that already live here? We're here. We're here, we're not going anywhere. To the queer, to the people who stood up and made false and gross statements about this community that I'm a part of, we see you. The children in this community see you, and the next generation is waiting to right your wrong.
Jessica O'Brien.
My name is Jessica O'Brien. I live at 143 Spring Drive, Appomattox. On June 1st, 2023, two concerned Appomattox citizens expressed their unease regarding a Pride Month display of books in the J. Robert Jameson Memorial Library's children's section through a Facebook post. These controversial books have been available at the library for over a year, raising questions about their sudden objections. Included in this post were comments made by newly-appointed library board member and newly-appointed library vice chairman, Brandon Barney, expressing his desire to have the books stolen from the library. He suggested checking the books out and never returning them as a way to send a message. These remarks raised concerns about his intentions and commitment to the library's well-being. On June 5th, numerous residents visited the library to investigate the Pride Month display. During their search, they encountered books in the adult and young adult graphic novel sections that were not part of the pride display but were erroneously associated with it. They claimed the books were in the children's section and labeled them as endangering and pornographic. During the June Board of Supervisors meeting, a man named Paul Raymond spoke passionately about his disagreement with the books present. He even suggested that potential felony classified violations may be involved, leading him to report the situation to the Commonwealth attorney. His plea for an investigation emphasizes the seriousness of this matter. Also during the same meeting, Representative Hips made comments leading us to believe that the dismissal of the library board was premeditated, and I quote, "I will say that tonight I'm going to appoint a library, a member to the board that has exactly the same views that I do, and had a conversation with her just two hours ago to make sure that was the case," end quote. An emergency meeting scheduled for June 28th was unfortunately canceled, possibly due to certain Facebook comments insinuating the involvement of a particular group. This group has resorted to online bullying, harassment, and defamation using derogatory terms to comment certain individuals. This entire situation has been heavily influenced by the viewpoint of Southern Baptist Christians who consider themselves conservatives. Regrettably, residents opposing the decisions made by the Board of Supervisors have struggled to have their voices heard. This highlights a failure to represent the interests of constituents impartially. Regardless of our personal viewpoints, it is essential to examine the facts objectively. We must consider whether decisions were made fairly and based on a comprehensive understanding of the situation, or if haste and judgment played a role. If the latter is true, I urge you to rectify the situation and demonstrate to the Appomattox community that the well-being of all individuals is genuinely valued. Thank you.
Reverend Paul Raymond.
Paul Michael Raymond, P.O. Box 2397, Appomattox, Virginia. First, let me say this, thank you again for, I'm growing weary of being here, I'm sure you're weary of me as well, but let me just begin by saying that this is not about equal rights, it's not about the LGBT community, it's not about black or white, it's about the obscenities for minors, being accessible to minors. So when we see the library having filters on the PCs prohibiting information off of the computers that are inappropriate, or the R-rated movies being regulated and prohibited from minors, we have to start asking some questions. Now, if I, as a private citizen, distribute, loan, or allow access to obscene materials to minors, according to the Code of Virginia, I would be in violation of Virginia law. If I distribute, loan, or allow access to obscene materials to minors, while in the library, I also would be in violation of Virginia law, which is a felony and subject to prosecution. If I distribute, loan, or allow access to library books which are in the library, which are obscene to minors and are part of that catalog of the library, I would also be in violation of Virginia law and subject to prosecution. But if I work in the library, or if I am a member of the library board and distribute, loan, or allow minors to access obscene books under some obscure exemption, I am no longer in violation of Virginia law, and therefore I am immune from any prosecution while perverting the minds of innocent children with impunity. And again, it's not about equal rights, it's not about black or white, and God knows, sir, you know that my colleagues are both black, white, and Hispanic. However, according to the traditional values of the majority of Appomattox citizens, I would still be guilty of sexually radicalizing children by allowing them free access to sexual obscenities. Now, what needs to happen, what I believe needs to happen, and I believe the majority of Appomattox citizens believe this needs to happen, is to secure library board members that will regulate and protect children from these books. And we need, well, I appreciate that, but we, look, we need the values of Appomattox to be represented here. We need to leave the values of San Francisco and Sicafornia and protect the children, those families that you have sworn to respect and protect. Now, a very wise and great man once said this, "A faithful body of Christians is the single most powerful threat to perversion and the perverts that traffic in wickedness against minors." Thank you very much.
Ms. Evelyn Ford.
My name is Evelyn Ford. I reside at 2834 Purdumille Road in Appomattox. My comments tonight are from me as an individual and not intended to represent the Library Board of Trustees. At the Board of Supervisors June meeting, the three remaining members of the Library Board of Trustees were dismissed for misconduct and neglect of duty concerning the display in the children's library. The library board is not responsible for the day-to-day management of the library. Among other things, displays, selecting books, and handling complaints from the public are handled by the library director. The former library director took another job in March. I was not aware of any complaints from citizens or the Board of Supervisors about the previous year's display. The 2023 Pride Month display went up June 1st. When library board members received complaints on June 2nd, the display was modified by changing the sign and removing some of the books. During the June meeting, several supervisors suggested further investigation, but that did not happen before the vote to dismiss the library board of trustees. After the motion carried by a three-to-two vote, the trustee from Appomattox River District and Courthouse District were reappointed. The only trustee that was not reappointed was elected to the library board in 2022 and began her service in July. I ask that you reconsider the reinstatement of the former Piney Mountain District Representative to the Jameson Memorial Library Board. I agree that parents always have the right and the responsibility to determine which books their children look at or check out at the library. In fact, children under the age of 13 are to be accompanied by an adult while they are in the library. I understand there are concerns about certain books in the library. There is a policy to remove books from the library, and it has several steps. Individuals may initiate a formal request by filling out the request for reconsideration of library material form, which is available at the library. The library director then makes a recommendation and sends a copy to the challenger and to the board of trustees. If the challenger is not satisfied, an appeal can be made to the board of trustees, which will be added to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the library board. Then the library board is free to form a committee who will review the material to be reconsidered and make a recommendation to the board to keep the item or to remove it from circulation. There have not been any requests for reconsideration of library material submitted to the library since I began attending board meetings in August of 2022. Thank you for listening, and I know you have a difficult job, but in conclusion, I ask that you reinstate the former Piney Mountain District Representative to the Jameson Memorial Library Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Paul Covelo.
I am Paul Covelo. I'm at 1746 Police Tower Road. Chairman Carter, members of the board, thank you for assembling and giving us the opportunity to speak. We just said the Pledge of Allegiance, wherein we declared ourselves to be a nation under God, and then prayed in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, and as such, with a firm belief that it is sincere, I would submit to you that the authority of the Lord Jesus Christ must be the standard by which we define how we function as a community, how you function as members of the board and as an entity that legislates on behalf of the county. As such, then, I believe the decision that you made was correct. Whether or not any individual member warranted dismissal is not for me to discuss, I don't know the particulars. But one thing is certain, human sexuality is clearly defined, and its legitimate parameters do not extend to homosexuality, transgenderism, cross-dressing, or other forms of perversion. And that being the case, Mrs. Humbles' testimony was compelling. Suicide is a horrifying way to end life, whatever the reason or the circumstances. And counseling, as was suggested by her and I believe some of the other speakers, is certainly warranted. We are a county filled with pastors, there are counselors of many different sorts that parents can seek for their children. Mrs. Humbles' qualifications are certainly acceptable and useful for people who are seeking help, but I would submit to you that under no circumstance are the books that I saw the means to deal with children who have troubling questions about their sexuality. It's simply not appropriate, and to suggest so is, in my mind, rather idiotic. Now, to suggest that there is racism afoot with respect to Mrs. Humbles is something I truly hope is not the case. That is a cancer on the human race and not acceptable under any circumstances, and whether or not she needs to be reinstated is not for me to determine, but I believe it is unequivocally clear that providing the books that I saw to children is by no means and not by any standard acceptable, and so it must be dealt with, and I believe the decision that you made was correct in that regard. Those books have to go. Twenty-some years ago, I became aware via the talk radio station in Lynchburg about a group called NAMBLER, the National Man-Boy Love Association, which finds books that I saw rather titillating. And so what we have is fodder for perverts and pedophiles. It's not acceptable for children who have troubling questions about their sexuality. That should be the responsibility for parents to seek in the presence of pastors or counselors, not books that promote promiscuous and perverted behavior. And that, I would submit to you, is something that we must persist in continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Wolfskill.
Ken Wolfskill, Porhaus Creek Road.
Ken Wolfskill, Poorhouse Creek Road, Appomattox. Thank you for providing this time and this forum. The question that we need to ask, and ask often, is why is it important to some people to sexualize our children? Why is it important to use our children as cannon fodder for a movement? And that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Ben Murch.
Ben Murch, 1505 Quartz Church Street. So I was at the library board meeting this past week, and I do want to commend the Piney Mountain District new board member there because she was the only board member there that wanted to have some transparency. We've got a controversy in our community. It is related to things that happened in the library. And she asked for two things in that meeting. She wanted to have an open discussion and not go into closed session. And she wanted to ask the director for details. That got shut down by the chairwoman there, who was standing board member when all this took place. So I want to commend Reverend Jones for that instatement, and I think she's doing a fantastic job as much as she can at this point. And also just want to reiterate that this, I think that there's something significant about the display, the contents of the display, and who the display is for. This wasn't a display that was for adults, right? Pride. This wasn't a display that was for teenagers. This was a display that was for children, okay? Targeting the children specifically with this display, and there was very specific material in this display in a county that has a case study about sex trafficking that came through exactly those type of materials and message. So this is a serious issue for this county, and you need to own up to it. And the fact that the Board of Supervisors' last meeting said, "We're done with this current library board. This is the second year the community has brought it up." And so, no, I don't care what your excuses are. You weren't here. It happened on your watch. And to take that hard approach, "It happened on your watch. We're adults. It happened on your watch. You didn't do anything about it. You're fired." That is an appropriate response. And so thank you to the board for doing that. Please maintain course, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, next we have our appearances. Employees, salary study. Stephanie Davis, Ph.D., collegiate associate professor, program director, graduate certificate in local government management. How you doing?
I'm good. That's a mouthful, isn't it?
I'm telling you.
There we go. And I just want to test. Yep. Good evening. So Chairman, Board of Supervisors, I am Dr. Stephanie Davis. I am with Virginia Tech. I run the graduate certificate in local government management. I also teach, and I also do work in our communities here in Virginia. So part of what I do is to help small communities in Virginia, strategic planning, pay plans, updates, all sorts of various capacity-building activities throughout the state. So for about the past five months, we've been working on a compensation and classification plan for your employees. I'm here tonight to present that plan to you. And we'll go through the presentation. Please feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions. You do have one document, and it looks like a bunch of numbers and a bunch of titles. So if everybody has that, and we'll talk about what that is in just a second. So let me put my glasses on. Sorry. When we started this project in February, we had a number of goals that we were trying to achieve in this project. First of all, we wanted to review the existing county's pay plan. And again, this is for your employees, the pay plan, how it compares to market. We also wanted to update and revise all of the job descriptions. We also wanted to make sure that we developed a classification plan, and we'll talk about what that is in just a second. So we reviewed the existing county's pay plan. We identified benchmark local governments. Who do you compete for for employees? And so we want to make sure we're competitive with our pay in that regard. We wanted to develop updated job descriptions for all county employees, which we have done. We wanted to support the development of a classification plan, develop the survey for the salary data from the benchmarks. In about March and April, I was compiling and analyzing that data. We have developed a new pay plan based on that benchmark data. And then we go through and appropriately place your employees on that new pay plan, and then tell you how much it costs to do that. And so that's what we'll talk about as well tonight. There are just some really interesting takeaways from the employees here with the county. Sixty-eight employees were included in the study. We established thirty pay grades. We identified and created forty-two classifications for all positions, and that was confirmed by the county. We have established career development positions, and we'll talk about what those are when we go through the sheet. You have over six hundred years of service with your employees here in Appomattox County, and that is a really big deal. Your average tenure for your employees is about eight-point-seven years, which is a really good tenure in terms of knowledge and capacity within your organization. Minimum tenure, of course, is zero. Those were folks that were hired after July 1st. And then you have a few employees that have been here for thirty-four years, and so that's really exciting as well. We included six local governments as our benchmark local governments, and that's a collaborative process between me and your county administrator. We developed a list. We agreed on that list. We received responses to our survey from all six. We had a hundred percent response rate, which is very, very good. Apologize, that's a little bit small, but you can see who we had: Cumberland, Charlotte, Prince Edward, Mecklenburg, Halifax, and Campbell. Again, we want benchmarks that are similar in size, a little bit bigger, that share borders, those sorts of things. So you're attached listening. I'm going to ask you all to look at this sheet. And again, I apologize, I can barely read it with my glasses on, so we can certainly get you a bigger copy. What a classification plan is, is establishing relationships among positions. So we are trying to put positions in a hierarchy of more lower-skilled, lower-level positions all the way up to your management positions. As you all know, we do not classify the county administrator or county attorney positions. Those are appointed-at-will positions. And so we have grades going from a four all the way to a thirty. And then we've applied the pay-salary data to develop those pay ranges and apply those to the different classifications. So for example, in facilities, we have a custodian. That position is a grade five. It goes from twenty-eight, two-nineteen, to thirty-seven, three-twenty, okay? This pay scale that you see here is an open-range pay system. And what that means is we have a minimum, we have a midpoint, and we have a maximum in terms of the salary range. That range is a thirty percent width, and I know that probably doesn't make a lot of sense. The reason why we do that is because your typical VRS pension is thirty years of service. So we can assume for this methodology, an employee comes in at minimum, and at thirty years of service, they would leave at the maximum. The midpoint is really, really important. The midpoint represents the market rate, okay? So someone who has been in that position for a while, fifteen years, they know how to do the job, they've been doing it for a long time, that's what we're comparing with the benchmark localities, okay? And that's an important key number to think about. The midpoint is market. I will also highlight for the board that as you start to hire higher-level positions, like your department heads, your assistant directors, you are most likely going to be hiring at that midpoint rather than minimum. It makes sense. Department heads, assistant directors are going to have significant amount of experience, and they most likely will be at that midpoint range rather than the minimum. It really is just a piece of knowledge for you all. So what we've done, once we had the classification system set up based on the unique characteristics of Appomattox County, based on best practices of other local governments, we have the pay grade set up based on the benchmark community's market survey data, then we say, "Okay, what does this mean for the employees here in Appomattox?" Because the first thing we want to do is make sure all employees are placed at the minimum of the scale. We can't have employees that aren't on the scale. So that's step one. The next step is how do we address compression? And when I say compression, compression is you have ten employees in the same position. Nine of them have been here for a few years, and you hire a new person. That new person, because of the market conditions, is making close to, or sometimes the same as your employees that have been here for a while. They're compressed against those new employees. So we want to shift those employees, and we have to have a methodology to do that. That's where the thirty percent range comes into play. Because for every year of service for an employee in their current position, each year is worth some value, one percent of that range. And so if you have an employee that's been here for five years, they'll be placed at the minimum and then move five percent along the range, representing that five years of service in their current position. And what we did, we moved all employees up to midpoint, which represents fifteen years of service. We could not do all employees from the minimum to maximum. Budgetary constraints, philosophical, you know, kind of how do we want to look at this plan? Many of my local governments only move employees to market. If we can just be at market, then we're good. And that is a reasonable and perfectly appropriate setup for this methodology. The second thing, excuse me, the third thing we wanted to look at was, okay, so if we get everyone where they're supposed to be paid based on the market, get everyone to the midpoint based on their years of service, then what about the folks that have fifteen or more years of service? And we said we want to recognize their service here with Appomattox County. And what that does is also addresses compression for your more senior employees who have longer tenures. So we proposed a hundred-dollar increase for any service over and above fifteen years of service. And that moves those folks from the midpoint to the maximum more as well. Are y'all okay? I can talk fast, and I talk quick. Okay.
You don't worry.
Okay. So we did three things. So the next thing you're probably thinking is, okay, how much is this going to cost us? So when we move everyone to the minimum of the new pay plan, there are ten employees that are impacted. The salary cost at thirty-three, five-oh-six. The total cost with benefits, this is your VRS, your VRS life, there's some hybrid VRS cost, and workers' comp, and life insurance. Total cost with benefits is thirty-six thousand, five-oh-seven. I do want to highlight, because that probably seems like a large number, but the average increase for your employees is only four-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars when we looked at what the different ranges were. This also, this plan ensures compliance with the minimum wage law that will be effective January of 2024. So all the employees are good, your minimums are good as you hire new employees, making sure that you're in compliance with state code. The next part is moving those employees from zero to fifteen years of service, moving from minimum to midpoint. Twenty-three employees impacted, salary cost of sixty-two, eight-sixty-one, for total cost with your fringe benefits, sixty-eight thousand, four-ninety-two. Again, the average increase of nine-hundred-and-eleven dollars. And then the compression adjustments, fifteen or more years of service, a hundred dollars per year of service, fourteen employees, salary cost at five-thousand-seven-hundred dollars, so total cost of six-thousand-two-eleven. So as you all start to think about the funding that you have available, the process for doing this, certainly the priority one is to put everyone on the new pay plan with the minimum adjustments. Priority two, everyone from minimum to midpoint. And then priority three, the years of service based on a hundred dollars for every year of service over fifteen years with Appomattox County. When we look at all three, your total implementation cost of a hundred-and-two-thousand, oh-sixty-seven. And then one thing that I wanted you all to just recognize, that in terms of the allocation of increases either at the minimum or the midpoint, that priority one and two, E-911 dispatchers received a significant increase due to market conditions. And so what's happening is your benchmark jurisdictions are paying for those positions more. There is a significant issue of retention and recruitment for those positions, similar to what we saw in public safety two years ago with police officers and that sort of thing. So the 911 dispatchers were seeing the exact same thing. Questions? That was a lot. That was really quick.
Any questions? Floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. So you said your plan would have thirty different classification levels for our employees?
There are thirty pay grades established. So the grade four through thirty, those are the different pay grades. There are forty-two classifications of positions. When I say classifications, I just mean titles.
That's different kinds of jobs.
That's exactly right. Yep, and I apologize for the confusion. But I am glad that you asked that. If you look at the sheet, you'll see a number of positions where we have a deputy commissioner of revenue, one, deputy commissioner of revenue, two. We have integrated career ladder positions into this plan. That gives employees room to grow. Think about it. The commissioner of revenue is an elected position. You have to run for office and that sort of thing, or you come in as a deputy clerk, one. If you don't have any room to grow, you may look for another position elsewhere, that sort of thing. But if you do certain things in your position, certifications, additional education, take on additional duties, we now have a way that we can promote you from a deputy commissioner, one, to a deputy commissioner, two. So we're really excited about having those different levels of a variety of positions with the county.
Any other questions?
Just to follow up on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So that career progression, you built those in. Are there other measures other than just longevity that these employees would have to do to get that next level?
That's correct. And so what will happen is, and many of those positions are not filled. We have created that within your classification plan. What will happen is the supervisor will evaluate the job description. They will recommend certain benchmarks that have to be made, certification as a treasurer, whatever that might be, maybe additional education, maybe taking on additional duties. It could be a component of longevity, you know, three years or more. And set up some really good expectations, and when that employee meets those expectations, they would be promoted. Great question. It would be individualized based on the position, though.
Any other questions? We really appreciate you coming and presenting this to us.
Yes, sir.
And I know our county administrator will take heed with us on this.
Yes. Good. You're welcome. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Blair Smith, Dominion Seven Architect. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Wait to get my presentation loaded up here.
All righty, thank you for having me tonight. I'll probably be telling you some things you probably already know. Probably be telling you some things you don't know. So hopefully it's a good mix of of all of that. So we got asked to look at your buildings in the county and your departments. And so we've been working on it, I guess, a year or so, something like that. So and we'll split it into the various tasks that we were asked to look at. One was looking at the conditions of the building. So we looked at the buildings from architectural standpoint. We looked at it from a heating cooling standpoint, electrical standpoint, plumbing standpoint. Most of them that we looked at were fine from a structural standpoint. So that was not part of this assessment. Neither were the sites. So in other words, the parking lots or the, you know, the drainage, those types of things. So we looked at eight buildings. You can see them here. I'm not going to read them off to you just for for brevity. But we looked at eight buildings. And these are the buildings we didn't look at, the new courthouse, which we call it new, but it's 20 years old. The old courthouse is, you're currently looking at a PPA submission on that. So we're not include that in this as well. So there's a variety of things that we're we're not looking at. We didn't look at this building because of kind of, you know, the potential of what may happen to this building down the road as well. And we didn't look at any of the school buildings. This was purely for the county owned buildings. Okay. So you have about 50,000 square feet of buildings. That would be if you kind of added up the square footage around the perimeter, right? That incorporates the outside wall. But you don't use all that. So this is your board of supervisors room. And let's say it's, you know, it's 20 feet wide and 60 feet long. So that's 100, that's 1,200 square feet, right? So but the that's your net square footage. And those are the spaces that you're using. And you can see here, you're about 73% usable, which is a really good number. And there's some reasons for that that are bad. But in the grand scheme of things, that's a good number. The original construction of these eight buildings was 1964. And that number is skewed by the Oakville Ruettin Building. If you threw that out, it would be in the 50s. Okay? So typically, when we evaluate buildings, most commercial buildings have a 50-year lifespan. And so when you reach that 50-year lifespan, you've got to make a decision what to do. And so if you look at your county administration building, it was built around 1970. I kind of, I can remember when it was built. So it's 50 years old. So you're at this quandary of what to do, right? The other thing you have to kind of fight around a little bit is your courthouse square is in the historic district and includes several buildings that are contributing resources to that. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So let me kind of run through these buildings real quickly. So the community center was built in 1989. It's it's a good building. It is really probably in better shape than I thought it would be. That was the first building I designed when I got out of college to kind of give you some perspective there, which was a long time ago. It's basically not being used. That's the problem. And so you have a building that you're you're maintaining that's not really being used. The multipurpose room is being used. And a county the size of Appomattox needs a facility that a building, you know, a room that big for various things. There are some problems outside. And, you know, when we saw things, I do want to bring them to your attention, even though it really weren't part of our scope. But the the basketball court there is in really bad shape and really needs to be rebuilt. There was some masonry damage on this building caused by some water infiltration. You fixed the roof, but you haven't fixed the masonry. This is only going to get worse because it's going to allow more water to come in. And it's just, it's a perpetual cycle. The inside's in pretty good shape. There's some stains in the ceiling. You've, you know, you've done some replacement on the heating cooling equipment. You do need to replace the generator panel there. I mean, it's not a big issue, but it's one of those things we we noted. The administration building is, as I mentioned earlier, is 50 years old, 53 years old. But it has recently been renovated, I guess, 2015 years, 2007, I believe is what it was upstairs. Where the cooperative extension service is, has never been renovated. It looks the same as it did in 1970. Once again, we've got masonry damage here. You've got woodwork damage here. And the windows have been a problem, even though you have replaced them. They've been a problem and all that needs to be taken into account. One thing that was not part of our scope of work was looking at the roofs. That was done by a separate group. So the Garland Group, they're a national group. Good information, their their local perspective is is not probably correct in terms of the things we can do here with different roof systems. But we did look at this since it is causing some problems. That roof is at the end of its life. But the biggest problem, and that's the reason I have a picture here, are the joints in those parapet walls and water is just going through that. And they just, that was the best quality picture I had, but there were worse conditions in that. So that is something that needs to be replaced when you do that. Another thing that I would encourage you to do on all your roofs, and we got on this one, we got on the sheriff's department roof, is when you do a roof replacement project, buildings change over the years. And if you get up on this roof, there are all kinds of penetrations of where there was supporting former heating and cooling equipment, stuff that you just don't use anymore. And you really should be taking that out because you want as few penetrations through that roof as possible. And that would be one of the things we'd recommend to you. One of the biggest problems downstairs in the court service unit is security. And you're no different than any other jurisdiction. So congratulations. And so what you do is you take a department and you move them here. And then you bring another department in and stick them in that place. And so what you've done is you have taken a space that was designed for social services in 1970, made it into a county administration area. And now it's for court services. And it was never designed for either a county administration office or for court services. And so times change. If you move people into these spaces, you really need to be renovating them so that they meet their needs. But once again, that doesn't, it's nothing new or different from you from any other jurisdiction. The Coilin Building is is interesting. It was originally built for the school board, which used to be downtown, and the federal ag agencies were in the basement. Eventually, social services needed room, and so they moved into the basement of this building. The maintenance of this building is provided by the schools. I think I'm correct in saying that, Susan, right? Right. So, you know, when we start talking about dollars and cents, there's work that needs to be done there. And so how you do that with with the schools would be something that you'll have to work through. There is masonry problems here. You'll hear a lot of that. There's a lot of masonry problems. Once again, you have these buildings which, you know, back when they were built, we used wood. And wood's not very durable. And you've got to take care of it. You've got to paint it, you know, on a regular basis. And once it starts to deteriorate, it becomes a bigger problem. The inside, you know, one of the biggest problems with the inside, and we'll talk about it later, is just the variation in the sizes of the office. So you just had a presentation on salaries. And so she was talking about, you know, creating these categories for people. So that's one of the things that we did is, you know, all your constitutional officers should have the same size space, you know? And so to try to create some unity as it goes down. Well, that's a good example is the school board office where that doesn't occur. They're just anybody and everybody in whatever space they need. The other thing you notice, you're going to see this on almost every one of these, is ADA compliant. There, you've never really made the attempt to to make your buildings handicap accessible. And so when we talk about that, you're talking about being accessible from the parking lot to the building and then inside the building. Okay? And so that's that's a problem in almost every one of your structures. And that's that's relative to me is the public coming to see somebody, coming to see Susan. Or it could be that you have an employee who breaks a leg and trying to, you know, go to a bathroom that's not accessible. So it's both from a the public standpoint, but also from your employee standpoint. The social service area is awful. I don't know what else to tell you. We were asked to look at the Oakville Ruettin Building. I don't think you paid a whole lot of money for it. It's one of those things you have. I think the real question is, is what do you do with it? It is a voting precinct for you. It's basically unoccupied. It it was built in an economical way because that's what the Ruettins needed. And it is what it is. But it's stuff that you have to deal with now. And if you like yellow as a color, this is the place for you to go. Because it's a glow, I mean, it just, it's awful, but. The health department building, it used to be a doctor's office. It was built in 1970. It was expanded around 1980. It's never had a renovation. And that lower level probably should not even be used for county offices. If you want to use it for storage, but it shouldn't be an office space. They're just, there are a number of problems down there. And so that's that's a challenge for you as you move forward. It has masonry problems. It has stormwater management problems in terms of water coming in. It has woodwork problems. It's just a variety of things that needs to happen there. The inside of the health department, this idea that it probably made sense the day that it was a medical office, and so it makes sense for the health department, probably was the right thing. But their needs have changed and everything, and so that's a problem. We're going to talk about how these departments use these spaces in a bit. And it's really, really hard with when COVID came in, how your state agencies are operating. So social services and health department. And as of when we met with them, they still quite hadn't figured that out. Some of it was still happening virtually, some of it's happening on site. But they're not operating the way they were pre-COVID. And so it's a challenge trying to project what their needs are going to be or spending money on the health department building when you don't really know what they're going to do. The voter registrar is down there. And as I said, really, you shouldn't have a department down there. It should be used for frankly, just storage. The public safety building is in pretty good shape. You know, it's one of the original buildings in the courthouse. It was built originally with the old courthouse. It's been expanded a number of times. It was renovated into the 911 center in 2005. And it in general is pretty good shape. I mean, it meets the needs that they have, which is good. The problem is the woodwork on this building. And it's been neglected for so long, a lot of it has started to rot. And so when we talk about what it's going to cost to do this, it's a guess because I don't know how much rot there really is. It's kind of harder to find it, you know, in getting up in these roofs. So that becomes a challenge. There are some other things that we'd like to see. There's some gutters that need to be repaired. These side steps that that handrail is not even attached to the to the steps. The inside, a couple of things I'll bring to your attention. You can see the picture on the right. That package unit is, the condensate from that is basically destroying the the drywall or plaster in that area. That is in the IT room. And so it's going to be very difficult to fix that and keep your IT systems running because there'll be sanding involved and sanding in IT systems. You're not going to very well together. This is the hub of your IT systems for the county. You also have a condition called rising damp. Rising damp is where you have exterior walls that are not on a foundation. And the moisture from the earth wicks its way up. And you can see the picture on the left where it's it's taking the the paint and the plaster off of those walls. You will see a picture in a minute of it happening elsewhere on the outside of a building. The sheriff's office has been fortunate. It was relatively new building. It was renovated or expanded in 2000 and recently renovated. It's got the magistrate in that area. Magistrate was moved there when the jail part of the building was no longer used. Once again, you're moving a organization into a building, into a space that wasn't designed for them. Now, they're also a state organization. Most of the work they do is virtually, which is a whole other issue that I don't have any control over. This was another building we got on the roof. And so the woodwork here that you see in that that eve and it needs to be replaced. That handicap ramp that you think it's handicap, it's not handicap. It's not accessible. So that's another challenge that you have. This roof has a number of things going on with it. If you look at the top picture there to the right of those penetrations, you can see the membrane is bulging up. And you can kind of see another one looking from viewed from 90 degrees. So what's happening here, that roof was replaced in 2015, so it's not that old. But the problem is you have an old piece of heating and cooling equipment that's no longer used that's got a piece of tarp on it. Water has gotten in that unit, has gotten, so since it was a jail, it's got a concrete roof deck to prevent people from getting out. So the water is getting from that unit between the concrete and the insulation that's on this roof. And then the the adhesive is failing and pushing that up. So you've got about 1,200 square feet of roof that you need to replace here. But the problems in this building kind of continue. This is a section that has a metal roof on it. And you can see that the paint has failed on this and rusting is beginning to happen. So this is the area that needs to be replaced. You can see here that I've got to note that it was installed over 30-pound felt. That was the trend when this was done 20 years ago. What we have found is the sun heats these metal roofs up so much that it creates condensation. And so it starts to, it rots from the inside. And so now we have high temperature flashings and membranes we put under these to to protect that. There are some other ways around dealing with this roof. Look at this picture here. You can see the backside of the sloped roof on this building. It's basically the same picture you saw before, but we have shingles that are different colors. And so in both cases, the shingles are failing. The granules are coming off, and you're beginning to see the scrim, and so it's beginning to deteriorate. So at this building, what you need to do, you need to, you need to fix that problem on the flat roof. You need to fix the problem on the metal roof, and you need to replace all of the shingles. So it's a pretty extensive project there. The inside is in pretty good shape. It's, I mean, it still looks like a jail in a lot of areas, as you can see with these pictures here. It's not the worst thing in the world. The one single thing I don't like about the building is in the evening, when they're closed, if you had someone, let's say they're in a domestic dispute, and the wife shows up and she comes into the foyer area there, there's nothing, there's no way to protect her. Okay, because the outside door is open. There's no place for her to go to be safe in case the husband came in behind her. Or then you can reverse them, whichever spousal way you want to look at it. I don't care. So this is, this is a problem. There's also no bullet resistant glazing between that lobby space and where the administrative staff sits. And so you've got some vulnerabilities there that need to be addressed. The treasure commissioner revenue building, it's another older building in the in this square here. And it's it's another building that really hasn't received much attention. Structurally, it's in really good shape. And the brick is pretty good shape here. The windows are original. The there's some woodwork that needs to be replaced, but it's in general, pretty good shape. But the inside is just too small. You know, part of the spaces, you have to go upstairs to do things. It's just, those two departments are too cramped here. And they probably were pushed to the high priority list in terms of needs from spatial needs that we'll talk about in a minute. Once again, the jail was not part of our study. We still see things as we're looking at them, and the woodwork needs to be painted. But here's another example of rising damp. Okay? And so we can ignore these things. And the water is just going to break this building apart. That's what's going to happen. And so if you want to keep the building, you need to spend some money on it. Same thing true with the fence, the brick fence. It's just, it's tired and needs facelift. And then you're also beginning to see some of the same problems occurring on the sheriff's office where there's a brick retaining wall. It's beginning to have some some damage that needs to be pointed up. So when we look at, you know, the fiscal needs and the priority list, I've kind of grouped them into the four, three, rather, three groups here. So the highest priority is taking care of the exterior repairs on the public safety 911 building, the roof repairs of the two buildings I showed you, dealing with that courthouse square fence and the treasure and commissioner revenue building. Until we kind of figure out what's going to happen at the state level, I wouldn't spend a whole lot of money on the health department or or social services. They need to kind of figure themselves out. Then we looked at spaces. So we have eight buildings, but we looked at 13 departments in those. And I'll kind of quickly run through those. As I mentioned, they've never really been designed for future needs or how they're doing business today, and so that's that's a problem. Most of them don't have enough space. And all of them kind of need some interior work except for the county administrators' office and public safety. And all of them kind of need some interior work except for the county administrator's office and public safety. As I mentioned, the commissioner revenue treasurer have the greatest needs. We have the victim witness advocates office, which is inside the county administration building. That is the wrong place for that person, and I realize you need a place for them to go. But county administration office is not where that should be. And the court service unit really should have been inside the courthouse when that building was designed. So we need to find a way of getting it closer. If we, and I know you're not going to do any addition on the new courthouse. We mentioned that the bottom of the health department building should not be a place for any department, so we need to find a new home for the registrar. Also, the area for the magistrate is not right. And there's, there's certainly work for this, on the Cortland building if you want to do that. So one of the challenges that we have is we only looked at eight buildings. And so when we start to say, okay, how can we move departments around, we're, we're limited. So the only building that you own, well, only two buildings that you own that have space available is either the community center or Oakville. Okay? And so when, and, and one's kind of in town and one's out of town. So I'm somewhat limited in saying, here are your options. And the, and the, and what would be really good if you had one large building that you could put a lot of these departments in? That would be the most efficient way to do it. And so if, if you have two departments that need a conference room or two departments that need bathrooms or two departments that need a break room, if they're in the same building co-located, you can get by with less. So you can get by with less square footage to have to take care of. But that's not on the table right now. And so that, that influences my recommendations to you. Okay? So we mentioned, once again, I've kind of grouped them together. The highest priorities would be the commissioner revenue treasurer, court services and the voter registrar in no particular order. Okay, so what do we do? So if I'm suggesting to you that we move the voter registrar, I got two options. I got the two buildings that are available. And I don't think it makes sense to move them to Oakville because they need to be in, in the town of mathematics. So, you know, we need to kind of think about that. So we need to, the, the community center is too good of a building to do anything, to, to not use. And so you need to find a use for it. The Oakville Ruettin Building is the, the different story. Yeah, you own it, it was, you bought it pretty cheap. So either you use it, fully use it, or you sell it, give it away or whatever the case may be. The problem is it's somewhat out of the way. We're not suggesting any changes to the public safety building. The community center, once again, if I'm looking at places to move voter registrar, I only have one. And, you know, we can debate whether that's the right place of them or not, but it's the only building that's, that's available in my mind to, to put them in. The Ruettin Building would serve okay for the extension office. They've got some outdoor things that would be nice to put there versus having them at their homes. If they wanted to have a demonstration garden, it would be a good place to do that there. There's a lot of things you could do there, but it would require an addition on that building. We're recommending that the county administration building on the lower level, would, once you move extension and court services out, and I haven't talked about court services yet, and they may have to move somewhere temporarily. But that would be the best location for the commissioner revenue and treasurer on that bottom floor. So you're going to completely renovate that and you're going to put an addition towards the parking lot on that lower level. Okay, so there would be their offices, there would be things that they could share because they do so much together anyway on the backside where we don't need windows. The county administration, or excuse me, this should be the sheriff, I'm sorry. I need to change that. The sheriff's department, we would end up putting an addition. One of the things I don't, I don't like how it's done in the sheriff's office. And we're in the process of, we've got the new police department for the city of Lynchburg under construction. But how we handle evidence, how you're doing it now is, could be better. And you have no place to bring a vehicle out of the weather. The, the area that you've got is too small. And so we're suggesting putting a, a bay in for doing some evidence recovery on, on a vehicle possibly. And then putting an addition on the building for the magistrate. The treasurer and commissioner revenue, our suggestion is, is that you put an addition on that building. You move court services, the victim witness into that building. You're also losing two offices from the community center by moving the registrar there. You put them in the upstairs, you add an elevator, you add a stair, and you completely renovate that building. I mentioned the historical district that you're in. I have had a conversation with DHR and they would like to see what you're going to do to these buildings, but it does not require any review or blessing by them. Okay? But they encourage you to be respectful of the history that you have there, which I think all of us can agree on. This kind of gives you a site plan of the courthouse square. What you're seeing in red there are additions on three buildings. Pretty simple. The problem is, is that these are relatively small additions on all these buildings. So there's all the things that you need to, to think about as you move down the road that are not part of this study and we're not really going to talk about it from a cost standpoint. The new courthouse is no longer new and there's, there is a section of roof there that will need to be replaced. There's a lot of lighting that could be replaced just to make you more energy conscious, improve your power bill. And there are a fair amount of exercises and emergency lights that need to be replaced or added in your buildings. Once again, we're not suggesting any work in the county administration, you know, that department upstairs, the Cortland building or the health department building. One of the things I want to kind of mention to you is, I just showed you a site plan that we're suggesting additions on three different buildings. The cost of doing small projects versus doing one larger project, there's a big difference there. And so you really ought to be considering rolling these smaller projects into one larger project. So if you're going to replace the roof of the sheriff's office, you ought to put it together with the county administration building and have one project there. If you just say, I want to replace that flat section of roof that's got some water infiltration, you'll pay so much for it. Finding somebody to do that would be very difficult. It'd be, that's the reason it'd be better to kind of roll these all together. So with these projects, we're talking about, about 13,000 square feet of renovations and adding about 6,500 square feet. So it's, it's not big in the grand scheme of things. We were just, your previous speaker was talking about the compression factor with salaries. Here's a quick history of construction cost. So we went for a long time after 2010 where things were flat. It was a very difficult time for companies to be profitable because the cost per square foot of buildings was just, was flat. Okay? And then it went up a little bit, then COVID hit. Guess what happened again? It went flat. Here's where we are after COVID. So this is a 10% annual increase. So Sam, how long have you been on the board here? Are your revenues coming in 10% more each year? And the answer is no. This is the challenge that you and every other jurisdiction faces. We have been, recently been awarded two projects for two different localities and then both of them got canceled because there's no money. We talked about salaries, they're not keeping up with inflation. It, it's, it's a challenge. It's a real challenge. So let me give you some perspective from an architectural standpoint. We're busy and we're expecting to be busy. I, I did this in May when I put this together because I thought I was going to be presenting something in May to you. I would say right now, we've got work going into '26. Okay? I've got two calls last week about new work. So it's just going, going, going. But we're facing the same thing, trying to find people to, to do work is a, is a problem. From the contractor's perspective, I was talking to a contractor today. He said the amount of calls they have for new work, they, they can't add, they can't even give them a price because they don't have the workload to get it done if they got it. And so there's still a lot of work out there. I was reading something last week where they were, the economic people who are smarter than me were projecting that when the interest rates went up for houses, that the cost per square foot of a house would start to come down. And it hasn't. Even with the high interest rates, the cost of a house has gone up, continued over the last six months. So we're expecting costs to continue to go up and that's a problem. This was a chart I did several years ago. This is, this information is about the cost of doing, building a school. And I know we're not building schools here, but it's still relevant for what you're doing. And I know you can't read these numbers. On the left-hand side, there are three different colors. There's a, there's a green, there's a lighter blue and a darker blue. The green is for an elementary school. The blue is a, one of the middles for middle and the one on the right is a high school. So in 1962, you could build a new elementary school for $62 a square foot. No, excuse me, for $12 a square foot, I'm sorry. $12 a square foot in 1962. And so now new elementary school is over $300 a square foot. Here's the problem. Here's the cost of living as compared to construction cost. How do you keep up? It's, it's, it's a real challenge. I mean, it's hard enough just to pay your employees, but how do you, how do you keep up with construction costs? It's real hard. So the reality is, you know, as, as you move through this and make these decisions, I think things are going to come in high. And you need to kind of temper your expectations that even though interest rates are high, that prices are going to fall and that's just not the case. The major driver in construction cost is not, no longer materials, it's labor cost. And as we push up the, the minimum wage, everybody gets pushed up. And so that's one of the things that's driving it. The other things that will kind of, when we talk about cost, I have considered that we're going to do one big project here. Okay? And so I'm giving you some estimates of construction. And so what that means is you'll be getting a total project cost. So it includes construction costs, the soft cost and a 10% contingency. Okay? The schedule's the same way. It talks about it from the design all the way through construction. So here's a kind of listing of the projects we're suggesting. Projects one is split into two, is 1A and 1B. It's taking care of the exterior of the public safety building, the wood there. You need to be moving on that now. Once again, there needs to be some evaluation to see how much wood is actually rotten. And then 1B is trying to do the roof replacements at the two buildings I mentioned. So roofing products were, had been very difficult to get. That is not so much of an issue right now. But the idea would be if you could design it, those roof replacements, bid it this fall and then construction would be in the spring. Because you, you can't do these roofs in, in the wintertime. The next project would be doing some work at the community center in, in Oakville in order to free up the bottom of administration building. And then going in and your big project would be the county administration building, the bottom level, the treasurer commissioner revenue building and the sheriff's office. And so the idea would be, is if the contractor was working on all three of these projects, he could bring in his site crew and do the site work at all three. And he just would move from one to the next to the other. He brings his concrete crew in, goes from one to the next to the other. And that way, you kind of phase that work. That would be the best way to kind of do it. So you're, you know, just between these two projects, you're looking at $5 million plus the, the other ones ahead of this. So that's kind of the, you know, the delta that you're kind of looking at. So with that, I know I've thrown a lot of information at you. I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
The floor is open for discussion with Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Flat roofs. So just from an architectural standpoint, why do they even build? I mean, they're, they're nothing but problems. So is there, maybe, I'm just naive, is there a rational explanation for why we build flat roofs?
I think part of it is, you know, the aesthetics of the building, depending on what it is. I mean, the new police department building we're building is three stories. You know, it's got equipment sitting on the roof, it makes sense to do that. I'll be honest with you, flat roofs don't scare me. If they're designed right, they don't, they, they'll last. We, we do too much of it. We have annual contracts to replace roofs on commercial buildings and school buildings. We just, they don't have problems. So I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't fear them. Your county administration building with the concrete parapets around it, they need to be covered with metal. That's what should have been done when that, that building was re-roofed. And if you had that, that building probably would be dry on the inside right now. What's happened at the sheriff's office is you should have either replaced that unit or just completely taken it out and, and roofed over top of it. So that was a decision that was made locally. It's not a, it's not a byproduct of, of the material. Okay? The shingles just wore out, they're old. So could you put a metal roof, a sloped metal roof on top of these things? Yes, but you do have equipment that you have to take into account that's providing the heating and cooling for that building.
That has to come off and then.
And then how do you duck it back into the building? I mean, it, at this point in time, those buildings will have a flat roof.
Thank you.
You know the questions? Well, Mr. Smith, we really appreciate.
I'm, I'm not sure you do, but that's okay.
Hey, this has been staring us in the eye for a long time.
And I think, you know, my, my advice would be, and I know money is, is precious and public money, y'all are good stewards of that and I completely agree with that. But you have to do some of this or you're going to have a lot worse problems. And you're not going to be spending five or $6 million, you're going to be spending $10 million for replacing a building. So, thank you.
Next gen, we'll have it CVDPC. Original Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. A task for the board's review is a lot addressed to Mr. Alec Braber. Is that how you pronounce his name? Executive Director of the Central Virginia Planning District Commission ensuring the commitment of Atmose County to participate in the future revision to the Central Virginia Planning District Commission Hazard Mitigation Plan 2020. Update the region Atmose County adopted Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Is there some reason we skipped item three?
No, Ms. Addle just circled it. However, since we have talked about this, staff recommends to Smith a lot of participation for Atmose County. Intent to participate in the Central Virginia Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Any discussion on this? Is that second? Discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Now, we'll go back. Resend the COVID-19 Declaration of Local Emergency Resolution. During the COVID, COVID virus, 2019 epidemic, the board adopted a COVID-19 Declaration of Local Emergency Resolution at a scheduled regular, regular meeting. March 16th, 2020. In accordance with provisions of Virginia Code Section 44 Stroke 146 Dot 21A, appropriate action shall be, appropriate action shall be taken to end the declared emergency by majority of the board of supervisors vote taken at an open meeting. So discussion on it? Is there a motion then to rescind?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we rescind the COVID declaration.
Second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay. Committee Appointments. Central Virginia Alliance for Community Living Appointment. And that is the old, what'd you say it was, Ms. Addle? I forgot. Central Virginia Commission on Aging, that's what it was. Yeah. At the June meeting, the board tabled the recommendation of a representative to fill the vacated seat of Mr. Robert Fox on the CVACL Board of Directors. we need to consider recommending a representative to fill the vacancy on the CVACL Board of Directors effective October 1, 2023. The term limit is for three years, ending September 30th, 2026. Does anyone have a name they'd like to put forth?
Mr. Chairman, the last time we discussed this, Ms. Karen Angulo came forward and said she might be interested. And I confirmed prior to this meeting today that she is, would be interested in serving that term on the board. So I would nominate her if no one else has anyone.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, you've made that in form of motion. Okay, you've made that in form of motion. Is that second? Let's have a roll call vote. Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones. Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
No.
And I'll vote no. So, 3-2. Next is the Piedmont Alcohol Safety Action Program Board of Directors' Appointment. Effective June 21st, 2023, the Commissions of Virginia Alcohol Program Regulation 24 VAC 35 dash 80 dash 10 through 24 VAC 35 dash 80 dash 140 were revised. These revisions included codifying the term of policy board members to three years. Previously, board members served as long as appointed by their governing body. Mr. Wilson Staples was appointed to the Piedmont Alcohol Safety Action Board of Directors by the board on March 15th, 2018. If the board wishes to reappoint Mr. Staples to the Piedmont Alcohol Safety Action Board of Directors, his term would expire June 30th, 2024. And Ms. Adams, you've been in contact with Mr. Staples? And he would like to continue his service, is that right? Okay. Does anybody else have any names they'd like to submit?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Staples.
Motion's made, is that second?
Second.
Discussion? But do a roll call vote. Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones. Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Next is Consent Agenda. Includes approval of bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the Consent Agenda shall be removed from the Consent Agenda at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the Consent Agenda. Items removed from the Consent Agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order that which they were removed from the Consent Agenda following consideration of the Consent Agenda. Hope everyone's had opportunity to review, peruse all this expenditures and other things. Is there any discussion on the Consent Agenda? Here and now, is our motion to approve the Consent Agenda as is?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve the Consent Agenda as submitted.
Is that second?
Second.
No discussion then? So we have a roll call vote? Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones. Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Mr. Latsney?
Nothing, your Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mrs. Adams?
Yes, sir. Before you, you have a copy of the newsletter that's submitted by the departments, the county departments. And there are a couple of things I wanted to notate on this. First of all, I have letters from Jessica O'Brien, Juanita Giles, and Kenneth Fortino concerning the library board. So if you would like to read those letters, I have them here available for your viewing. Also, you may have received notification from VACO about the annual conference, and if you are interested in attending November the 12th through the 14th, please notify staff so that we can make those provisions.
When is it going to be held at this year?
It's going back to the homestead.
Really?
Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hinkle.
Ms. Adams reports that I've been, you know, really comprehensive, but I was questioning about, and we talked about the community center. Could we add something in the report that would tell us how many rentals we had in the community center, what the revenue was every month? So we can see what the usage is over that building?
Previous month, the director of tourism, she has been including the number of rentals, but we haven't included the revenue, so I'll be sure to add that as well.
That'll be good.
Also, you did have the salary study, and I just wanted to notate that the board appropriated funds and a line item so that we could hopefully enforce that. So at some point in time, I would like for the board's consideration to adopt the study that was presented this evening, and so we can get that information out to the departments on who that would be impacted by that.
Does anyone think we need additional FYI?
I would just like to have a, a month to look at the proposal, to see who it encompasses, which jobs are classified where, are they, does it make sense? And so, I wouldn't want to do it tonight, but I'm willing to consider that next month.
Would you like me to add that to the agenda in August?
I think it's a good idea. Everybody else in agreement with that? Anything else, Ms. Adams?
That's all that I have.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Reports and informational items you have before you encompasses a school financial report and Robbie Lee's Soil and Water Conservation District meeting minutes. All right, next is supervisor concerns. Mr. Hips. Reverend Jones.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to address the, the firing of our local library board. And I just wanted to make a few comments. The threshold for firing a library board for misconduct must be higher than I feel or I think. It must be I know. Not I know the library board has violated my Christian or moral worldview. It must be I know the library board has violated the Virginia Code that governs libraries in the Commonwealth. That being said, before the Appomattox County Board of Supervisors can legally fire the library board of this county, we must first engage in due diligence before the action, not after the action. Failure to do so is an example of poor governance. My vote to file the library board without first doing my due diligence was an exercise of poor governance. That being said, I did do my due diligence after I voted to fire the library board. This is what I discovered. Number one, the pride display was set up on June 1st, and after complaints received, the display was relocated on June 2nd. Number three, I discovered the responsibility for the content in the library lies with the library director, not the library board. Four, the library board is responsible for assuring the library director follows the library code established by the Virginia General Assembly. Five, neither the library director nor the Appomattox Library Board violated the Code of Virginia. The only thing worse than poor governance is doubling down in that poor governance instead of making the appropriate corrections. So what I discovered is the Virginia Code is the one that is allowing this material. I voted because I was against the material. No ifs, ands, and buts about it. My worldview is that this material should not be in the library, but there's a procedure for removing such items from the library. I was listening to National Public Radio picked up the story, and the reporter did more due diligence than I did. This is a democracy, and we all have the right to share our opinions. And again, my worldview says I don't want this material there. Okay, so next you have to follow procedure. The procedure is to make the appropriate contact, and there's a way that these materials can be removed from the library without removing the board member. I'm sure it made quite a few of us feel very well about the decision that was made, but I felt that I had not done my due diligence. And when I did do my due diligence, I found out that it's about the Code of Virginia is what allows a library director, not the board, to make the decisions on the content. And if content needs to be removed, there's a procedure for doing that. So my feeling was I voted because my worldview is totally against the material. So I think the next step is follow the procedure. The Virginia Code allows for that material to be in the library. And so that's why I wanted to have this addressed. And I, let me say, I don't believe this was a matter of race. Not at all. I think race had absolutely nothing to, to do with it, even though I realize that some people in the African-American community may think so. If Ms. Humble's had been spoken to during the George Floyd protests and said, if you don't like such and such a thing, get on a boat. I mean, I can see why the African-American community may have thought that race was involved, but I'm confident that that was not the case. And again, I can be against the material, but I feel like we have to do governance, and we have to follow the proper procedures. And I feel like the proper procedures were not followed for the removing of Ms. Humble's. And so that's why I brought it up, and I was extremely disappointed that I could not even get this board to give me a hearing about whether, you know, this was the right decision that was made. So that being said, I, I'm struggling with how can someone be removed from the board who did not violate the Code of Virginia? And I can sit on the board of supervisors after exercising poor governance, and then for the board not to even give me the courtesy of being able to amend the agenda? It just makes me feel, you know, I mean, why am I here? Why am I here? I represent all the citizens of this county, and whether I like the procedures or whether I like the material or not, I feel like we have to do the proper governance. And this has gotten wider than LGBT. It's now let's remove this book, let's remove that out the library. If it's R-rated, it needs to go. We're trying to protect our teenagers. Well, I'm a retired school teacher, and that train has already left the station. This right here is a library for our teenagers, and I tell you, it is some disgusting stuff that those young people, whether it's middle school or high school, are sharing with each other, and the majority of them don't go to the library to get their content. They get the content right off of here. That being said, I want everybody to understand that I voted because I feel like this is inappropriate material in our library. And, but I don't get to make that decision myself. I don't get to fire a board without doing due diligence. What should have happened? We should have allowed the board to come here and had a conversation with them prior to, and I, I feel like it just wasn't done properly, so... Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I'm long-winded, but that's...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hinkle.
No concerns this time.
Mr. Hogan.
One, Mr. Chairman, in light of the fact that we have continued to have lots of things facing us down the road that cost us lots of money, and our budget is getting tighter and tighter and tighter every year, and is, I don't know if, I can't see back there whether Ms. Phelps is here or not. I told her I wasn't going to bring it up this month, but I'm going to bring it up anyway. I, I had a conversation with the treasurer and county administrator. In light of the fact that we have seen a rise in interest rates recently, and, and we're getting to the points where people are actually starting to get some actual real returns on their money in the bank, I've asked to just look at, see what kind of return are we getting with our money? I know we've had some money in the LGIP, the local government investment pool, and I've asked the treasurer just, just to take a look and see what kind of returns are they getting now? I know some other localities are putting money into that and are getting real good returns. So if we can get a better return on what we have, and, and I know our cash flows change from time to time depending on when taxes come in and when we pay out stuff, and, but I just wanted to bring to the board's attention that I have asked to look at that, just to see what, if anything, we could do to make sure we're maximizing any opportunities out there. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I really wasn't going to say anything, but if I did not say anything, then I would be doing myself injustice. And that is this. When we appoint people to the board, of any board, then we expect them to do their job. We expect them to be honest. We expect them to really know the true feelings of whatever is going on, on any given subject. That's what these people are for. And it's just like we are here. We try to represent the population of Appomattox County, and I hope that we know what's going on pretty much by the majority of the people. But for me to appoint a person or persons that gets on Facebook, of all places, gets on Facebook in Downs County, I don't agree with that, and I'll tell the world that. That's not what they are there for. They don't need to be down in the county if they don't know what they're talking about to start off with. But sometimes they do know what they're talking about, but a majority of the time they don't. They use that Facebook as a, as a newspaper, if you will. And I'm guilty of it. I like Facebook at times. But what I, in essence, what I'm saying is, this board took a, a, took a, a direction in which to go forward. We appointed a new board member or members. So I, for one, and I do not know Mrs. Humble's. I've never met her before. I'm sure she's a fine lady. But this board made an appointment back in June. So in my opinion, it's just my opinion, that we let alone and see what this new board would do. I'm not so sure if we replaced the board member with Mrs. Humble's. Is she going to do the same thing next year? I don't know. And I don't, and I started to say I don't need to know, but yes, I do. I do need to know, because I cannot support and will not support anybody that goes against the county in whatever capacity. So I'm saying that. And Mr. Jones, Reverend Jones, you need an answer, don't you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just would like finally say that I don't, I'm not on social media, so I don't know what goes on on social media. But I do know that over 300,000 people heard that Ms. Humble's cheat engaged in misconduct, and I think that that's very unfair to her. And again, National Public Radio and others have addressed that. So I feel that... So I feel that, you know, she should have a chance because of that. And for that reason, I move that we rescind our action last month removing Ms. Humbles from misconduct and restate her to the library board.
Okay, motion's on the floor. Is there a second?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
So I'm just trying to figure out the process, and that's what I argued about last month was we, there's a process we have to follow. But now that that process, the majority decided to do something different, and now we have a new board, and as Mr. Jones correctly points out, you can't get rid of folks unless there's misconduct or malfeasance. So now we have a new position, a new person appointed. How do you get rid of them if they didn't? I mean, that's, that's my, that's the reason I didn't second the motion earlier is I don't know legally how you go back now in time and realize, okay, maybe we shouldn't have done something that we did, but it's done. And I don't know legally how you undo it.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest the possibility of restating her on the board, which does not necessarily mean we would have to remove Ms. Billingsley. But again, you know, my feeling really is that over 300,000 people heard that Ms. Humbles engaged in misconduct. My feeling is that the threshold has to be higher than this material in the library goes against my worldview, which it does. No ifs, ands, and buts about it. When I did my due diligence, I found out that she did not engage in misconduct. We're dealing with the Code of Virginia that gives that authority to the librarian to make those decisions, and their board's responsibility is to follow the policies sent by the state of Virginia. So this thing is bigger than the local, the local library board. I was shocked at the things that the library allows. I mean, it was an education for me, but in the end, I don't like the fact that juveniles can go get
I didn't have that. That juveniles can go and get contraception without their parents, but it's a state law. And no, we don't have the authority to overturn that. You know, so it, to me, it seems like the issue is the state law and not Ms. Humbles. And so I, I just feel so strongly that a wrong has occurred, and if she's a champion for the LGBT movement or equality in that kind of way, that does not give me legally the reason to say you need to go. She's not responsible for the display that was there. I mean, according to the law, she is not responsible for that. This content has been in the library for years. So I feel like it's, this is a teachable moment, I really do believe. I mean, do we have to move Uncle Tom's Cabin out the library too? But the graphicness and sexuality that book needs to go to? I mean, it's probably a whole list of stuff. And just very briefly, I've never talked as much at a board meeting, but I remember when my kids were growing up, and we had a rule that you don't bring certain things into our house. It was inappropriate for us to have, we don't want this music, we don't want this in our house. And when Judy found such material, it went in the trash can. And even though the kids were upset, saying, it wasn't mine, it belonged to my friends. Well, it was in my house, and it's unacceptable content in my house, and it has to go. Like I said, I, my suggestion, Mr. Chairman, into this board, is that we consider reinstating her, or at least doing our due diligence if you all are not comfortable with her being reinstated. But I've tried to share with you what I've learned after we took the action. And I made the vote because I'm totally against that material, but that's not the issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Did you, you made a motion. Is that second?
I have a question.
Question?
I already asked you.
So the only thing that I know procedurally that we could do is go back and have a motion to reconsider that vote. But the only people that could vote in that is the people that voted for it.
Correct. Which Reverend Jones is one of the people that voted for it, so he could make the motion to reconsider.
You and I can't vote?
You can vote, you just couldn't make the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, you can vote, you just can't, only somebody on the prevailing side can make a motion to reconsider what was done, but that doesn't prevent you from, again, voting. It simply prevents somebody from making a, somebody that's on the losing side can't keep making motions hoping that everybody gives in and lets them. So you have to be on the winning side to make a motion to undo something.
Mr. Henkel.
Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, this board has the authority to appoint two members at large, which would make it a seven-member board. That may be a compromise for solving a solution or solving this predicament. Just wanted to put that out there.
Would you want to amend your motion to include that?
Well, if, if we're, if the board is considering increasing the size, I would recommend we put it in a form of a resolution. State law says it's got to be a minimum of five, no less than five, so you could make it six or seven or nine. So if, in fact, the board is amenable to the idea of expanding the board's size, I recommend we put that in a form of a resolution so that we have an actual formal document expanding the size, and then following that resolution can be a motion to appoint whoever as the new member in that position. Yes. That's how I would suggest. If the board is amenable to the idea, and on the next agenda, I'll draft up a resolution that expands the board to whatever number you say. That would be my suggestion for handling that, if expansion of the board is what you're thinking.
Well, I like what Mr. Henkel said. I really do. We need a compromise. Because this thing could drag on and drag on, and so, so many untruths is lingering out there, and that's a good way to put it, rest.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure everybody understands. I received zero pressure. Ms. Humbles did not approach me. No one on the other side of this issue approached me. You know, I never went and talked to any of the board members and tried to convince them, hey, look, this is what I feel like we need to do. I said, I didn't want to do that. You know, I received one bail threat, and that came from people who thought I might be changing. I received one threat in the form of if you change your vote, I am going to go to every person in the Pine Mountain and show them pornography that you support. That's the only bail threat that I received. But from the other side of the issue, nothing. Nothing. I just received praise from those people like me that wanted the material. So I just wanted to put that out front so nobody can think that something was orchestrated. Nobody approached me, not Ms. Humbles, nobody.
Okay, thank you. Is it consensus of the board then that we ask the county attorney to draw a resolution?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Henkel.
I would only support that resolution if it was a odd number like seven, so that there's a tiebreaker in any vote that the board may have.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
I'll draft the resolution with the blank. And then y'all can, six, seven, nine, I don't care. I'll just, I'll draft a resolution, and then we'll put it on the next agenda, and then y'all can, the appropriate point to debate that would be on the next agenda and then determine what you want to do going forward.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
That's, that's going to be cleaner than anything else.
Is that good with the fellow members?
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a motion on the floor. Is that right? I just don't have a second.
Oh, yes.
How should we, yeah, for the purpose of the minutes?
Well, he's got a motion, so if there's a second, then that's a motion to reconsider the previous vote. If that's what y'all do, then this issue, you still may want to expand the board, I don't know, but I guess Reverend Jones has the right to ask for a second on his motion to reconsider. So I guess it's where he has a motion, just needs a second.
Okay, so if, if the motion is second, then at that point, let's see.
If there's a second, then there'd be a vote to reconsider and undo the removal of Ms. Humbles from the library board.
So if there's a second, then the vote is positive for Mrs. Humbles.
Correct.
Chairman, clarification, because the way I heard Mr. Jones' message, it was completely undo what we did, which would mean
Well, I mean, the rest of it, the other two members were reappointed, and I think an existing opening was filled, so I think the only thing, my ears were hearing that the Reverend just wants to undo the Humbles removal.
I heard he said resend the motion. To me, that meant the whole motion
Right, and then maybe we need some clarification.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that Joe Trisha Humbles be reinstated to the library board.
Okay. Motion may, is that a second?
I have another question.
Question, Mr. Hogan.
If the, if the motion is seconded and it passes, who do you get rid of?
Well, if you, if you rescind the removal of Ms. Humbles, then that rescind, it rescinds the need to have appointed somebody else to that position. She would return to her Pine Mountain district position, and the appointee that was put in there would be removed. It would, it would be a reset back to the way it was before the last meeting with respect to Ms. Humbles.
So Ms. Billingsley would step off until it gets a resolution? Is that right?
Yeah, basically, what you would be doing is revoking the vote to remove Ms. Humbles. If you revoke the vote to remove her, then she's still there, then there was no opening, and therefore, the appointment into the opening goes away because there was no opening to make an appointment into. Does that make sense?
Mr. Henkel.
I need clarification, because the original motion wasn't individual, it was the three remaining board members be removed. It wasn't by individual. So can we do it by individual?
I think you can revoke, partially revoke an action. I think you can partially, like, do something similar like a zoning case or zoning ordinance. You adopt three pieces, you could say, hey, I want to revoke this one, you know, we made a mistake on PTA. So it is, it is appropriate to revoke a portion of the motion if that's the board's desire.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would certainly be open for the compromise of expanding if that's the only way we can get Ms. Humbles reinstated.
Okay, Mr. Latch, you got to help me out here.
Well, we don't have a second on the revoke motion yet, so if you don't get a second, then it dies, and then I'll just draft up a resolution, which Mr. Jones has a right to ask for on the next agenda. I mean, every, any board member can have someplace on the agenda, so it doesn't even need your head nods. If the Reverend, if Reverend Jones wants the expansion on the next agenda, then he has a right to have that on the next agenda, so. So if there's no second, then on the next agenda, there'll be an expansion resolution that y'all can discuss and vote on.
Okay. So I'll ask, is that a second? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next meeting is August the 21st. Fun saying that. Mr. Henkel.
Mr. Chairman, let's rise.